Good evening, everyone. I call to order the May 6, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Routine matters under number two, consideration of approval of the minutes from the May 3, 2021 meeting. Anyone have any critiques and or additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept as written. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. We'll go through a roll call to approve those. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Chace.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those minutes will be accepted as written. Thank you. From the superintendent and staff, Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. So tonight is, I'm pleased to, actually going to turn it over to our outgoing Director of Nursing, Jean Althausi, to introduce our new incoming Director of Nursing Services, Kristin Houlihan. And just by way of process, Ms. Dolan was involved in the interview process. We had several members of the staff along with Jean, who went through the interview process. And Kristin was the name that came forward. We're very excited about welcoming her to Braintree. This is by statute, the school committee's appointment. So the superintendent recommends, the school committee appoints if they agree, and then the superintendent hires. So the three-step process under the statute. And with that, I would ask Jean could speak to Kristin and her qualifications a little bit.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. First, I'd like to say that I'm very proud of my time that I've had in Braintree over the past five years.
I was gonna do that when you were done. I was, don't steal my thunder. I'm gonna talk about how awesome you've been when you're done with Kristin. I was gonna do it afterward. But you are proud of your time here.
Well, anyways, the Metro West Regional School Nurse Consultant, and then for the last three years is the Director of Nursing Services here for the Braintree community. As the Director, it's been my privilege to assist the school community in navigating through the COVID-19 pandemic. Collectively, the school community has done an outstanding job, from the nursing staff, school staff, from administration, students and families. It really, it has been a remarkable year, even within dealing with the pandemic. I think collaboratively, we've all done a great job. But it is my privilege and pleasure to introduce, hopefully, the person who the school committee will recommend for hire. Back to you, Dr. Hackett. We interviewed Kristin Houlihan on April 16, myself, Janet Dolan, Melanie Bennett, Sarah Coughlin, Heidi Morris, and Diane Bowman. Kristin comes to us. The Director of Nursing Services is a very unique position. There's not a lot of people who have the appropriate experience across the state. There's not a lot of jobs specifically for this niche position. So Kristin will come to us if you guys vote her in from Quincy. She's been the school nurse there for over 16 years. She's been the high school nurse there. I've spoken with the nurse leader over in Quincy, Rita Bailey, who I've worked closely with for years, even before I was here in Braintree. And she is very sad to lose Kristin as a school nurse, but is extremely happy to welcome her as a colleague in the nurse leader field. Kristin has demonstrated leadership skills in Quincy. She oversees the SAD program. She was nominated as the Massachusetts School Nurse of the Year in 2018. And she has demonstrated that she has the ability and the qualifications for this job. And it is my sincere hope that the school committee will find her appropriate candidate and hire her. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the school committee to our outgoing Director of Nursing?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please, you're recognized.
Was that for me? Sorry.
Yes.
I just want to recognize Jean for your, you know, outstanding work, especially during this last year. It's been one you'll always remember, one you may want to forget, but we're gonna be sad to, you know, not have you there. I think I worked with you for a few months, and you are an amazing boss. And again, thank you for all that you've done for this town, and we look forward to seeing what you do in the future.
Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
We'll recognize Ms. Dolan, please. You have the floor.
Everybody wants to talk. I'll echo what Carla said. Thank you so much, Jean, for working with us over these years. It's been a real pleasure. And for me personally, I'll definitely miss having you around and your helpfulness and involvement in the Wellness Committee and just being a resource. It's been great. So thank you. As you said, I was part of the small team that interviewed Kristin, and I couldn't wait to fill out my little rubric after because I thought she was fabulous. And I heartily endorse her as our next Director of Nursing. So just looking back at what I wrote before the meeting, you know, she's been recognized at the state level, which I think is really impressive. She brings a lot of skill in terms of nursing, it sounds like. And, you know, she also was evident, had good experience in softer skills like listening, conflict resolution, and empathy. So I really like the fact that Kristin gave very clear and concise answers that also had substance behind them. She seems to have a real passion for the field and for kids. And she seems quite eager to step into a challenging role like this, and I think she will be a terrific next Director of Nursing for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. We appreciate a lot of work that you put in on this, and it is greatly appreciated. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo the kudos to our outgoing nursing director, because, you know, Jean has literally done such an amazing job in working with the town of Braintree and managing all of the nursing staff. And it all starts at the top. And when you look at how incredible our nursing staff is throughout the entire school system, you know, it really reflects on your leadership. And I really appreciate all that you've done, not just during this pandemic, but this pandemic, you've done a tremendous job, but just in general. And, you know, I wish you the best and thank you for your service to the town, to the children of the town of Braintree. And I also want to say that when, you know, you mentioned the team that did the interview process, you know, it's an incredible group of people that I have a lot of confidence in. And I think that whoever they chose would be the greatest candidate, because just a wonderful group of people that did the interview process. So I'm very pleased with the outcome and will be supporting their recommendation. And I look forward to Kristin joining the team and know that we'll continue that wonderful service that, you know, we've had for so many years under Jean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other comments or questions from the school committee?
If the school committee is complete, I would have a couple of things.
All right, go ahead. I was gonna thank Jean, you know, and through this.
Oh, no, I want you to go first.
Well, come on. All right, listen, I did want to thank Jean. I'm making light of a situation that was extremely serious, what, 14 months ago? I think it should be duly noted that Jean and the team of school nurses worked seamlessly with the town and their representatives from public health. And I believe that's one of the things that helped us, shall we say, do far better than other areas because of that seamlessness between that group. Can't thank you enough, Jean. I do hope that, you know, you're moving on to a place that's far better. And to Kristin, I see no problem with being in favor of this appointment. Doctor, you have the floor.
And I won't try to outdo anybody. I just want to personally thank Jean. As you know, we're both going out at the same time. I have never worked with anyone better. Jean is a tremendous asset. She has been a tremendous asset. And talk about the right person at the right time. We could not have had a better Director of School Nursing. Separate and apart from all the work that she did in coordinating with the town, she is someone who is professional, offers her a professional opinion, is not overly cautious, but reasonably cautious. She is level-headed and just have a wealth of experience that she brought to the role. And I have to say that, you know, we talked a lot almost every day for quite some time. And we would have been at a loss without her. So while I wish I would have an opportunity to work with Kristin, I can just tell you that Jean is the best I've ever worked with. So Kristin does have some big shoes to fill. So I will miss her. That's it.
Thank you. My head's getting very, very large.
Did anyone mute her right now?
But I am going on to better places. I am retiring, and I have seven grandchildren, and I hope to enjoy watching them grow and just have fun.
Thank you. At this point, I call upon school committee member Ms. Dolan.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kristin Houlihan as our next Director of Nursing.
And I have a second. Roll call, vote for the appointment. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Chace.
Aye.
Mr. Chace.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Doctor, it's back on your desk. Again, thank you, Ms. Dolan, for your work on this. Moving on, let's see, consideration for the approval of a revised school year, 2021-2022 school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This actually was discussed at the Policy and Education Subcommittee that met just prior to this meeting. I have brought forward two recommended versions. One recommended, but I wanted to show you both that I brought to the Policy and Education Subcommittee. The reason why this is before you again this evening, as you know, you did vote to approve a calendar for next year. We had a, there was a, the process with the school year calendar with cooperation with the BEA is it's kind of a meet and consult. We go back and forth on some drafts. We had a lot going on, as you know, over the last several weeks. We had some miscommunication in the draft that I had brought to you for, that you eventually approved, actually was different than the contract language. Language is in the teacher's contract, because we felt that there was value in not returning the last week in August, that we wanted to wait until after the Labor Day vacation. The contract does not, essentially does not allow that. It is specific on a couple of pieces of one school year has to start relative to Labor Day. So the drafts that I brought to the Policy and Education Subcommittee this evening, one, this would, both drafts have this in common that I'm going to show you. This is not the one that Policy and Education is going to move forward to you. But we would start with a teacher workshop day on Tuesday, August 31. We would have the first day of school for students would be on Wednesday, the first. Thursday, the second would be another day of school, as we have always done and as within the contract. The Friday before Labor Day would be a no-school day for anyone. And then we had talked about, as you recall, the seventh being Rosh Hashanah, and then the eighth also being a day of observance. In the calendar that you approved, because the first day of school was going to be this week for students, we had made the recommendation that we not return with students until the ninth, because we also knew that there will be, there's a segment of our Jewish population who may also want to celebrate or recognize, observe Rosh Hashanah on the eighth as well, the second day. Mr. Lee has done a ton of work with local religious leaders over the last few years. You actually have a policy around religious holidays. We certainly make accommodations for students on religious holidays that we don't take off from school. But with now the first day of school coming in for students on the first, and then two days of school that week for them, the eighth would no longer be a student, the first day of school. So the recommendation that the Policy and Education Subcommittee voted to bring forward to you is this one. Once again, it would be the same thing, teacher workshop day on the 31st. Wednesday and Thursday would be the first two days of school for students. Friday would be no school. We would recognize Tuesday as the day as Rosh Hashanah. That is the actual day that the majority of the world been advised by religious community that to be good if we did not have school on that day. And then Wednesday, we would come back to school with all students, those students who would be observing that day. We would provide support for as we do all of our students as per the policy. So I will let Ms. Dolan speak to it, but this is the calendar that the Policy and Education Subcommittee moved forward.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. You have the floor.
Thank you. So as Dr. Hackett said, this is the version that we moved forward with the thinking being that our local religious leader that we consulted has quote-unquote blessed having the Tuesday, the first day of Rosh Hashanah off, and the fact that it no longer conflicts with the first day of school. As Dr. Hackett said, we felt comfortable offering that one day for observance and having kids come back after this extra-long weekend on the eighth. So while I think ultimately, my personal preference would have been to have the orientations that week before. I do understand with our contract language that we need to bring kids back on that Wednesday. And so this is the version of the calendar that we've moved forward.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Any comments or questions from the school committee on this?
Through the chair?
Yes. Ms. Cobb, the mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to reiterate that we did get an email about having the eighth off. So, you know, I just didn't want to mention that. And so you're okay, and religious leaders are okay with just having the seventh. I mean, I just wanted to remind that there was some concern from other people.
The email that I'm aware of was specific to the fact that that was going to be the first day of school for all students, which is why we had made that recommendation to not start school on the eighth. But now with starting school with all students on the first, and then also the second is no longer the first day.
Okay, so it wasn't the actual having the day off, but okay, I understand the difference. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the school committee on this? Hearing none. Does this constitute a first reading? So in other words, we may have to take this to our next meeting?
That is always up to the school committee. We would ask for your approval, only because you've seen the bulk of the calendar before the change that we've described. And I think that we really need to get this information out to parents and staff.
Okay, let me ask the first question. Is there anyone on the school committee that has a problem with voting on this this evening? Not hearing that. I'm sorry.
I have no problem with it, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chace. Any other member that may have a problem with voting on this this evening?
Mr. Chair.
Not hearing any, excuse me?
Sorry, I have no problem with it. Just before we kind of pass this by and get it done, could you just show us or tell us what that would change the last day of school to be, Dr. Hackett?
The last day of school in this calendar would be the 16th of June, if you did not use any snow days.
Okay, thank you. Just curious. That's always the other, the other end of the calendar is always a point of curiosity as well. So thank you. And I have no issue as well. Thank you for moving this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Very important point, the end of school. Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. We'll go with the roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros. I know she's there.
Aye. Can you hear me?
No, yes, we can. Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Chace.
Aye.
Mr. Chace.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This is to be accepted. Shall we distribute that to as many people as we possibly can? We appreciate the people's patience on this, trying to get this correct. Moving on, Doctor.
And then the good news is, we're going to start school normally, have a normal school year. So we can all celebrate that.
From your lips to God's ears.
So I would, go ahead.
Okay, so you would what? Excuse me?
I would defer to you as to what you want to do next.
Well, okay, so we're moving on to floor, which is consideration of the approval of the FY '22 budget articles, individual articles.
So I'll make these motions, Mr. Chair, if I may, individually.
By all means.
So we move that Article 1, Elementary Schools Administration, in the sum of $1,48617, be brought forward to the school committee for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there a problem with us all voting on these at the end? I would ask that, or we can just go motion and second and vote at the end, unless there's someone that has a problem with that. Hearing none. Excuse me?
Sir, I'm good with it, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chace. Proceed, Mr. Chace.
Okay, Article 2, Middle School Administration, in the sum of $996,453.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Article 3, High School Administration, in the sum of $1,339,996.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Article 4, Curriculum and Instruction, $53,288,749.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Article 5, Curriculum Development and Professional Development, in the sum of $266,657.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Article 6, Building and Grounds Maintenance and Utilities, in the sum of $5,059,554.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moving on.
Article 7, General Education Transportation, sum of $1,566,504.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moving on.
Article 8, Athletics, in the sum of $792,942.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Article 9, All Other District-Wide Services, sum of $5,204,731.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moving on.
And Article 10, Technology and Data Processing Tech Department, in the sum of $1,577,915.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
That brings us to a grand total of?
The total of fiscal year 2022 of $71,574,118.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go with a roll call vote as far as acceptance. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros. Yes, I heard you. Okay. Ms. Cobb, the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Chace. Mr. Chace.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I think people have to be cognizant of the fact that this was our starting date. We have a responsibility via the charter that we had to bring a number forward to the mayor. And we know that, well, that number is going to move, and it has moved, and I'm praying it moves even more. So with that, good doctor, could you please explain the slides?
Sure. I just, you know, I want to, first of all, help everyone understand what you voted on tonight and what you didn't vote on tonight, right? So tonight, you voted on a budget that was the approved operating budget, which the bottom line you had, as Chairman Devin pointed out, already approved, the $71,574,118. That is the number that is the approved local and state expenditure. It is a reduction, as you know, to the budget, the current fiscal year budget of $73,218,902. What the budget is sitting at right now, as a result of additional federal funding, or the federal funding we're going to receive, and I will talk about that in a minute as well, is $74,683,280. Everything, the $3.1 million that the $74 million represents, that's above and beyond the 71, is not included in the 71 and is a separate, is treated as essentially a separate budget. The federal money will, when it comes in, we will be offsetting expenses for multiple things that's included in this budget that you decided to bring back into the budget as a result of the initial cuts. For example, there was about $650,000 worth of savings that would have resulted from a redistricting. That was taken off the table. The positions that that redistricting represents will be carried in that $3,109,162. We had proposed the elimination in the $71 million of all of our reading, literacy, and math specialists at the elementary school level. You funded those, brought those back in with additional federal funding for half, essentially 50% of the current level of staffing. So we're going to go from two literacy specialists per building to one, one math specialist per building, 2.5. What I want to make sure that you understand is that $3 million in federal funding is our, essentially is our SIR3. SIR 1 and 2, this has not been a cheap year. We have spent well over $1 million knocking on the door of $1.2, $1.3 million on HVAC. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on technology. We have spent well over $1 million on staffing. Everything from hiring five additional long-term substitute custodians to deal with COVID-related cleaning, to subsidizing some of our transportation driver cost, to hiring substitute teachers for staff who were out on quarantine. If you remember, the quarantine periods, especially in the beginning of the school year, were longer than they ended up being later on. But those positions had to be, to the extent that teachers could not teach if they were ill. We had to cover those positions. We had a regular, essentially a regular rotation of substitutes, and it still wasn't enough. We had often our administrators' principals, as well as assistant principals, even department heads, directors were covering classrooms where we could not find coverage. This has not been a cheap year. And I haven't even mentioned the amount of money that we spent on PPE, masks, some other examples, hand sanitizer, cleaner, the biodegradable cleaner. We were going through that quite quickly. And also the equipment to clean. We purchased a lot of equipment to clean as well. I think that one of the important points, and I have mentioned this to a couple of people, that I am proud of in terms of our expenditures of federal funding through this school year, was that the majority of it has been for items that were long, that will, our long-term infrastructure issues that we've had within the school. So we did complete repair and replacement of HVAC equipment, to the extent that we could, that the existing system would allow it. As you know, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on testing air ventilation with a professional outside company, bringing them back in two and three times sometimes to retest rooms. We did not use any classrooms until the classrooms passed those tests. We purchased an air purifier for every single classroom space, and also for some of our larger spaces, which we ended up purchasing more than one to cover the size of the space. So that, those air purifiers are here to use for as long as they last. The HVAC repairs, the equipment and the upgrades in the HVAC are items that we would love to have done, and, you know, at some point through capital projects, would have gotten to. Those are taken care of. We didn't buy Plexiglas, like some other school systems did, because we tried to stay away from purchases that we needed. Uh, we didn't buy Plexiglas like some other school systems did because we tried to stay away from purchases that we knew that in long term were not gonna be something we're gonna need to sustain. We were covering, um, quite a few families with hotspots that were about, uh, forty to fifty dollars apiece. There were cellular hotspots. Those families that could not access the internet, especially early on in the pandemic, when we, um, we were ramping up. Um, we have, uh, upgraded our, um, the, uh, pipe essentially from one gigabyte to two gigabytes through Bell. We contracted with Bell to help us, um, with our upgrades to our, to our network, uh, additional servers, additional, um, access points for Wi-Fi, uh, everything, the bulk of what we have done have, with the federal money over the course of twenty-one, twenty-two, of, of over twenty-one this school year, has been upgrades to infrastructure that will last. So those were good investments. The three point one million dollars that we are carrying into FY twenty-two to cover the FY twenty-two proposed budget of the seventy-four million dollars, uh, essentially is S R three. We've not yet received those funds. Um, we are not rolling the dice because we know the funds are available, but, uh, the Department of Ed is telling us that, uh, we will have access to those funds as of the end of June, July one, which that timing works for us. There is no reason to believe that we're not going to get those funds. So from a school department perspective, um, you have essentially maximized the use of your federal funds, uh, and yes, sir, three is, uh, in the neighborhood of three, four, three, five. So there's, there's really not a lot of S R three funding left, uh, to go into FY twenty-three and twenty-four. So the calls to use additional federal funds, um, from the school side, um, while I understand and appreciate it, they're not, they are just not there. Um, now, having said that, we also know that the federal funding is still being worked through at the, at the federal and state level. I'll let the mayor speak to this certainly, but, uh, you know, what we know right now is there could be some additional funding, but until we have it, it's not real. So, um, as we move forward, you're never gonna touch that, you're not gonna come back to that seventy-one million five seventy-four, one eighteen number. That number is, is set, it's going to the council, the backup that supports that number is going to the council. You've approved it tonight through the ten articles. Where you have the ability, if potentially federal funding becomes available or other funding becomes available, is in that three point one million dollar bucket. So anything that you add or essentially take away, but anything that you add is, will, will land there. It does not go through the same processes what we've gone through to get the seventy-one point five million. Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna speak for you. I don't know if you have anything that you wanna add to that?
Sure, um, to the Chair, um, I would say that, I, I would say, well firstly, we know that, um, in regards to, uh, federal funding that came directly through, it actually came through the state, not directly to us. Uh, that's one point eight million dollars that we've, uh, put into the budget. We get fifty percent this year, fifty percent next year. That was direct local aid. That's already part of the budget, so that's a one, well, two-time funding source. And obviously, the S R three money and S R two money and, uh, and the CARES Act money has been utilized by the school department to offset any costs associated with COVID. And it was a very trying year, obviously. But as far as the future and where we might be able to find additional revenue sources, there will be one-time sources, but there is approximately seven point one million dollars that is going to the county. And I did speak with the county commissioner and I also, uh, have, um, spoke to, um, Councilor Ryan, who represents, uh, the town on the Norfolk County side as well. And at this point, there really is no, uh, there, there's no answer as to how they're, um, going to utilize that funding. So the funding got sent directly to the county and there are some restrictions on it. We haven't been, we haven't been given clarification as to how the money is to be spent. And until we get an answer on that, we won't know if we're gonna get any of it, all of it, some of it. But once we get an answer on that, we will definitely, um, that's something that, you know, will, I'll bring, um, to the, to the committee and, and let you know what we're looking at for that amount. The, really, the, the, the other area that I've been working on is the additional federal funding that went directly to the state. So it's really, it's really gone to the governor, so it's, it's really the executive that handles that particular portion of money. So it's, it's really something that I've been working, um, with the governor's office, uh, through his finance people to lobby for Braintree to get some of that funding to help us offset. Because as you can see, you know, we have had a lot of expenses in order to get our students back into school, which the governor and Dussie were pushing for. And, you know, we, as a school committee, did everything we could to support on, um, you know, the, on the executive level to make sure that we gave the support, uh, to our administration to get whatever needed to be done, to get our students back in. I think that, you know, we've, we've done what we're supposed to do and, you know, our kids are back in school and they go on full days, all day, and high school is literally, uh, March, April, major. So it's like two months before, um, requirement of Dussie to get the high school kids back. So I think that overall administration, teachers, uh, did a great job, students, um, you know, have, have worked hard to, to get themselves back in school. So the future or, or any additional funding would, A, possibly come through the county. Um, but as I said, it's, at this point, we can't count it because we don't know what the restrictions are and how it's supposed to be administered. And nor, nor do the commissioners at this point have clear understanding as to what their obligation is. Um, hopefully it becomes a pass-through. That would be the easiest thing for us. Um, in addition to that, uh, we have, um, you know, the, the state that has the money and I, and I'll continue to lobby the governor's office and we'll, we're, think we're scheduled for another meeting coming up next week to see if there's any movement, uh, on that front. So those are the other areas that we have potential, um, of, of bringing some additional funding. And, um, unfortunately, at this point, we are at where we're at and, uh, there really is no, um, additional money out there, uh, as far as our free cash goes. Just, you know, to give you an update on that, we started, um, a year ago, you know, when COVID first hit in twenty-twenty, we had a little over nine million dollars. We had some, uh, supplemental costs that came into play and then we basically used our rainy day fund to fund, um, our budget last year. So we used, uh, four point six million dollars of one-time revenue sources to balance our budget, which was approximately a hundred and forty-three plus million dollars. So our so-called, you know, free cash or emergency fund, uh, rainy day fund, whatever you wanna call it locally here in, in Braintree is at three million dollars. And, you know, as far as, you know, being, you know, responsible with, with money, we really need to leave that three million where it is and, um, you know, as far as our bond ratings and, and things of that nature, we need to have that three million, uh, in, in free cash. And it's something that we really cannot dip into at this point. And I think we, we did, you know, make a commitment during, uh, COVID in twen- in twenty-twenty, in the twenty-twenty-one budget during twenty-twenty, um, to use free cash to make sure that we could maintain, um, some sense of normalcy. And, you know, unfortunately, we have, you know, we have seen drastic, uh, decline in revenue. We are actively working to, to reverse that and, you know, we've made some very conservative estimates and we're hoping that we're wrong and we're hoping that, uh, some of these numbers start to turn around. And, um, at this point, we, you know, we are spending what we have and we are budgeting what we have. And, you know, as I said, we're gonna continue to try to get that additional revenue from the county and some from the state. But until we get some sort of confirmation one way or the other, we really are stuck exactly where we are right now, uh, with, uh, the current operating budget as a whole. So, um, the, the bright side is that, you know, we have the opportunity to, um, continue to work with the county and work with the state and have a possibility of, of more revenue to help us with the budget, not only this year, but, but in, in next year's round. So that's where we're at and, you know, I wish, I, I wish we got, you know, eighteen million dollars like our neighbors, uh, uh, but, you know, that, that's not how the formula was set up. So, uh, I appreciate, uh, the work that, you know, the administration has done, uh, with getting, um, our budget, uh, to an area where, you know, we are, we are providing the best possible education for our students and, um, you know, minimizing, um, the, you know, the effect on any, on, on the classroom. And I think that they've accomplished that. So I just wanna thank Dr. Hackett, Dr. Lee and all the administration for their work on that and Mr. Krumen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greatly appreciated. And thank you for your office's help as well. It, it's been many different people that have come up with this, 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 this answer that's far better than the devastation we were fight, facing before. So thank you and your, your office for helping also. Um, where are we?
Mr. Chair, just, just if I may.
Yes, Mr. Kukoris, you were, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to, and I don't wanna, uh, reiterate the comments of the previous speaker, but, um, one thing that, um, may be helpful and, and I think Councilor Berica made a video that just kind of explains the town budget process and actual, you know, the sources of funding. So for those that may, you know, have some struggle with how the numbers, you know, come to us and how the numbers are put together, I think she did an excellent job and I know Ways and Means is going through all the individual pieces of the budget, but she did an excellent job kind of explaining what we've been talking about for the past few months as we do our budget process, kind of where things stand in the town, what the sources of funding are, what they look like last year. So if you get, if, you know, folks have questions, it's probably a good resource to look at. Um, and again, I wanna thank the administration. I know this has been a, you know, a, a difficult, um, journey this year through the budget process, but I think when you go back and look at the slide that the doctor had up, to go from where we thought we were gonna be a few months ago to where we landed today, um, is a considerable difference. And, you know, it took a lot of work to make sure that we did that in the most responsible way and that we did stay as far away from the classroom as we could. So I, I appreciate the work that everyone's done. Um, I'd also be remiss if I didn't recog- recognize all our great teachers. I think the mayor mentioned it earlier, but, you know, we wouldn't have all our students back in class without the great staff that we have. And, uh, we certainly appreciate them and, uh, you know, are glad that our students have been back in school, you know, for the last couple of months and, uh, have really gotten to, you know, enjoy that experience after kind of a long pause. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Any other comments and questions from the school committee on this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cobb-Lamere, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I want to thank, um, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee and administration for all the work they've done. Um, I know that this has not been easy. I appreciate that we're not touching curriculum or programs, but unfortunately, we are touching, um, you know, teacher reductions. So I know last meeting I asked, you know, if we did get additional funding or, you know, additional revenue in some way, you know, how would we add that back? And so with that, um, you did talk about the specialists and I think that's great because that's what I would advocate for because I think they add a huge value, um, to the classroom and the kids get great services. Um, so my question is, do we have some type of a recovery budget that we would be able to allocate certain things from with that, um, three point one million dollars? Is that would we, we would work from that and do you have a recovery budget in mind?
Assuming the question is to me, Mr. Chair, okay. Um, so we did touch on it a little bit, uh, at the last meeting. I did try to out, uh, just kinda outline what are the kind of pieces of the, uh, budget that we are carrying in that three point one million dollars that otherwise would have been cut, uh, if we had not applied those federal funds. Um, clearly, if, you know, as a reduction to literacy and math specialists of, of approximately fifty percent, um, I think we can, and I do think we all agree, we haven't really had this conversation publicly, but I just, based on, um, hearing you talk about this through the public process in, in our meetings, I think you all, uh, recognize that those were the last positions that we went to um, and that we would, uh, look to restore, um, those, uh, in part or in whole, uh, if more funds became available. I, I think that, um, you know, I will say, I, you know, while it is a, uh, it is a reduction in, um, the number of people who are in the buildings, I do believe, um, that, uh, we are still, uh, will be able to provide the services, uh, direct services to students, uh, who, who need it the most. Uh, you know, there, when asked the question, how many would, how, how many do you really need? Uh, you know, the, the answer is, is a little bit limitless. I mean, you know, to, in, so at some point, there has to be a reasonable determination as to what your staffing levels can look like, uh, and, and from a perspective of what your budget can handle. And, um, you know, I will, once again, say that, uh, you know, there's a lot of the reductions that were made were absolutely driven by enrollment and a lot of the resulting positions that were cut, uh, were dealt with by attrition, uh, either through retirements or resignations. So while people have been, um, putting the number thirty or forty out there, uh, it is not thirty or forty, it's under thirty. But in terms of the number of people actually affected and, um, layoffs that we've had to, to make to actual staff, um, the number is about half of that, so a little bit over. So, uh, it's not a fun business. Um, we've not wanted to do any of it, obviously. This is not what we get into this business for. Uh, we're here to support kids. We want, uh, the best we can. We wanna be able to spend as much as we can on our students. Uh, we have just hit a difficult economic time. And, um, as, um, I've said before, and I know that the mayor has said before, you know, all you have to do is look around at other school systems who have been hit, uh, in different years than us. I know Weymouth was hit last year. Uh, they happened to have a windfall going in to next year with federal funding and good for them. Um, you know, this is just kind of our, our situation, kind of our year and the federal funding, as the mayor's already pointed out, the formula doesn't really work to the same advantage to us as it does to other communities, uh, primarily based on, um, population, um, in, in distribution of need. So, um, I believe that, and I would not have brought forward a budget to you, um, that I didn't believe that was the best that we could do. And I would thank, uh, Mr. Kukoris and the Finance Committee, um, for their hard work in, um, recognizing the two new members, uh, who feel like they've been with us forever and Ms. Cobb-Lamere and Ms. Saros. I, I can't even imagine, uh, coming onto a school committee at a more difficult time. Um, I think we had three non-months of normalcy after you were sworn in and we were into the pandemic. And, um, you know, you've done a, you've done a tremendous job, um, trying to learn the process in an, in a year that one was not normal. And then on top of that, uh, putting together an FY twenty-two budget that was also not normal. Um, and I know it's been difficult and your advocacy has been heard. Um, you have pounded on me privately. Um, and I've tried to do the best I can, um, to, uh, meet your, uh, what I sometimes call demands, but I will say politely, uh, requests. Um, and, and, you know, I think we've done the best we can and, and, you know, um, to the mayor's earlier point, I, you know, if federal funding becomes available, if other funding becomes available, that will come back to you for consideration. I still would advise you, and I know I am outgoing, but I, I would still advise you that three point one million dollars in one-time money is a lot of money to fund a budget with. And you still have to think about future years because you don't wanna, um, you, you do not wanna put yourself in a situation where you, you make everything great for next year and then, um, you know, not able to recover, um, in the following year. And, um, we're all hopeful the economy turns around. We're all hopeful that we, uh, see the kind of economic activity that Braintree is used to. Um, and that we, you know, you, you build back on the recovery. But, um, you know, I guess the point is that it's not entirely over, um, because we still have the hope that there will be additional funding come in. We just really need to make sure. Because we still have the hope that there will be additional funding come in. We just really need to make sure. That we have it in hand, and I know Mayor Corus also. Who I've spent a tremendous amount of time with as well. Is on it to the point probably of the irritation of some people who he's speaking to, so. You have an advocate in the mayor, you have an advocate, I know we have an advocate in school committee members individually as. And so, you know, again, it's it was been a hard way to finish my time here in Braintree. I would love to have. Not have had to go through this. When I think about the six years that I've been here and. Things that we've been able to accomplish and the strides that we've made, I'm very proud of of the work we've done together as a team. Through a couple of different administrations and new members, and you should be as well. Even though it's been very difficult for you. But, you know, because that huge stipend that you get, which is zero, you know, you you keep showing up and. You you represent your community very well, and I will miss working with you, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Doctor. I do think it should be noted and announced that we will be. Before the Towns Ways and Means Committee this coming Thursday. Obviously, if I can be in attendance. In person, I think we're going moving to that way. I'll be there representing schools. And any of the other members that would like to be there. Let's see if we can. Thank you, Doctor. Where are we now? We're supposed to go into executives. Excuse me.
Sorry, may I just say one quick thing?
By all means, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. As usual, Dr. Hackett's way more eloquent than I am, so having to follow him is is never fun, but. You know, I think I have to pull out my old saw that two things can be true at the same time, where I sincerely believe. That the administration, the mayor, and the committee have tried as hard as they possibly can to put forth. A responsible budget, and they've looked after every dollar. But I just want to acknowledge that it stinks that, you know, real people lost their jobs, and so I want to make sure that we're. Sensitive to that and acknowledge that, and. As Dr. Hackett said. And the way I've been thinking of it is, you know, this is a milestone by town charter. We need to submit these numbers and keep the process moving, but this isn't the end of the conversation. As we heard the mayor talk about. A few minutes ago, so. You know, even though we passed this and we've moved it forward, the efforts I know will continue to get us into the restorative column. As quickly and as creatively as we can. Thank you.
Well put, Ms. Dolan. Thank you very much for your clarity. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none. We're supposed to go into executive session, but you know, look, we always try and have a public comment, so. You know, for what it's worth, anyone that would like to raise their hand and ask a few questions. Or make a few statements, excuse me, that's what executive session is for. I will allow that. We ask that you come on, state your name. We have a hard time calling on some people that have certain nicknames that we really can't say, so. If you're called upon, please come in, state your name, y- y- your address or whatnot is kind of, there are some people that aren't safe with that. I understand that. But the rules of. Public comment, three minutes per speaker. We ask that you keep to things that are within our purview. And that you show respect to any and all opinions, whether you agree with them or not. So with that. Do we have any? Hands raised, Doctor, or whoever's got the con.
We do have one, Sarah Rad.
Ms. Rad, you have the floor.
Thank you for taking our call. This is actually Sarah Rod and Katie Summers. We are listening together. We live on Highland Avenue East and parents of Ross Elementary School children. And, you know, I. I probably am mirroring what. Mirroring what Ms. Dolan, Mrs. Dolan just said. Regarding the good, you know, two sides of everything. And when you look at the entire school budget. Yes, we take out a huge part of it. But rightly so. And I can't help but notice when I look at the budget. That you guys have posted on a PDF that the golf course costs two million dollars for next year to maintain. So it's a really hard pill to swallow. That my children are going to lose their reading specialists who they depend greatly upon. To keep a golf course open. So. I'm appreciative of the work that you guys do. But I'd like to hear what other cuts happened around. I know this is a school committee meeting, and I apologize, but. I'd like to hear what other cuts have happened around Braintree. Yes, ours is the biggest, so, you know, the numbers create, our numbers, when you create, you know, cut by a percentage, create the biggest impact. But I'd like to know what other avenues were explored. To come upon. Cutting our staff by twenty. I hear you're saying it's different numbers. Yes, people have retired. But it's a big chunk of teachers. And as a parent who. As I said on your last meeting, bought into Braintree specifically for the school system. This has just been a very disappointing process. I heard a ton about the redistricting, and I felt like it was out of the blue. That we heard about. Teachers losing their positions. And you're saying you're keeping it out of the classroom, and yes, curriculum hasn't been cut. But I'm sorry, those teachers, those reading specialists, those math specialists, those people who work with our kids day in and day out. And I have to note that math specialist and. The reading specialist are the people who kept our kids in synchronous learning. Online. I just find all of this. A very difficult pill to swallow. And I just think we can do better by our children. So thank you for hearing my comment.
Thank you very much. Doctor, you're muted.
There are no other hands.
Okay, with that, can we bring up the? Legal term I have to recite for to go into executive session? Okay, consideration to enter into executive session, precision to mass general law, chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one A three. Discuss the strategy for a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. As the chair declares, an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiation. Negotiation and or legal position of the Braintree school system. We are not, I don't. You know, we'll have to come back because we'll we'll. Accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote to entrance executive session. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Mrs. Mrs. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb Lemire.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Of course.
Aye.
Mr. Chief.
Aye.
And the chair outside will be entering a executive session, and then will be coming out to close, so. We'll send out the. Shall we say the the numbers to be able to. Shall we say go into executive session, then we'll come out. And then we'll come back into this meeting in order to end it.
Thank you, people.
Thank you.
Are you sending it out as we speak, Doctor?
Yes.
Thank you.
You look good. You look good.
Do what I can.
Did you want the Jeep or did you want the Barbie? That's what we're trying to figure out.
And we're back in public session. Let me bring Mr. Devon over from the uh.
The dark side.
And he goes. We have three diehard attendees.
Tom, you're muted.
We try to do that, Kelly, on purpose, but
First of all, thank the diehards that stayed here with a full agenda. Been realized we have but to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion of second will go with the roll call vote. You know, the mayor had to leave. Ms. Sowers, you still with us?
Hi.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Hi.
Ms. Dolan?
Hi.
Mr. Gacorus?
Hi.
Mr. Chafe?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. We are now adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.